Good evening. I would like to call the work session to order regarding the municipal service center relocation site assessment. If we could stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk is not here, but I see everyone is here, so we could just have that recorded. I have no announcements. Is there any -- now is the time for a public comment. If you wish to come forward and make a public comment, please state your name, address, city, or township of residence, and you have three minutes to make a public comment. Seeing none, I will close the public comments section. Basically, this is a presentation, first, from the city manager and his staff about their thoughts regarding the municipal service center relocation site assessment. And, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Really, what we're going to be doing now is the second of two planned public meetings, leading up to, hopefully, it'll be a recommendation here soon on where we'd like to see the municipal service center relocated. Tonight, leading us through the meeting is going to be Kurt, and he's got the analytic team with him who's been preparing all of the information you're going to be looking at this evening. It's our hope that if we don't cover the material during the initial presentation, that there's a lot of interchange and dialogue with the commission so that we can answer any questions you might have. But with that, sir, no further ado, I'm going to pass it over to Director Goodman.
Thank you. What I'm going to do tonight, it's January 8th, we had a town hall meeting. This is a similar presentation that was -- that I provided at that meeting. However, this is a shortened version. The purpose, again, is to open up some dialogue with the commission, seek input, and hopefully, through some discussions, we will be able to move forward with a possible recommendation at our February 9th meeting. A little bit of background, with the hospital, Duke Life Point, choosing the city of Marquette for its future location, we learned that the site just so happened to be where the current municipal service center is. And as part of that announcement is, we had to get engaged about relocating our service center. I want to introduce a few of our team, Jengla Page, Management Analysis, Scott Cambenzi, Superintendent of Public Works, Eric Steeman, he's not here today, Director of Facilities, and City Engineer Keith Whittington. So we've been meeting on and off for the last couple of months, going through the process of, you know, looking for 12, 14 acres of potential site for the service center operations. That was a pretty interesting challenge. Again, we did a lot of brainstorming. Tonight, in the presentation, I'm not going to show the ones we eliminated, however, a couple of sites that we've narrowed down. Another thing, too, that's going on, parallel to this challenge, is we're also in the process of selecting an engineer, architect, design-build team. We're doing some -- we shortlisted four firms, and we'll be doing some interviews end of this week. And once again, we hope to have a recommendation for a design-build team for this project at a commission meeting, a future commission meeting. So again, that's been a pretty good exercise, and a lot of work by our staff. So with that, I'm going to start the presentation. Part of our site evaluation, we used a criteria. A lot of the, you'll see on the screen here, you know, size, location, accessibility, traffic flow, land use zoning, current ownership, logistics, site conditions, operational impact, surrounding property use, and utilities. Again, these are criteria that we looked at of all the sites during our evaluation. After going through the list of criteria, we narrowed down our selection to approximately five sites. These, in order, no certain order, McLovin Avenue, Division, the Armory National Guard Building, I'll talk a little bit more on that later, Armory Field, North Ballfields, and Wright Street property adjacent to NMU. Before I go on any farther, one thing also we did is, we reached out to potential partners. Again, when we were given this task, what we wanted to do is, you know, look at, you know, is there other -- any other facilities within the city of Marquette that we might be able to partner with, such as Northern Michigan, the county, Borden Light and Power, the schools. So maybe there was a possibility that we could work on sharing some facilities. So we definitely put a lot of effort into that. Some good ideas came out of it, especially moving forward with this project. There is still open -- we'll still have open dialogue with those partners. Site here, excuse me, site here is McLovin Avenue, I'm going to go forward. This one is located at McLovin Avenue and Division Street, called the Triangle. It's completely wooded, very, fairly hilly, far south portion of the city. There is some collector road and road entrances, residential, recreational area surrounding, utilities available, and one drawback, it's not on a fiber. One thing we use, the city uses a fiber loop for all its technology, communications within the city facilities. You can see by the contour lines that this could be a challenge if the site was selected due to the contour, the rugged terrain. Another one we learned about, again, this is the Armory Building, that's at Wright and Lincoln. The state has been looking at downsizing, or not, or combining its armories throughout the U.P. to one central location, which means this building here, this property is available for the city to possibly purchase, to maybe use with, you know, with Northern. So there's some possibilities by acquiring this property, we could do sort of a land swap with Northern Michigan, that you'll see on another site coming up in a couple of other slides. It's only 6.1 acres. Again, typically, we're looking at about 12, maybe 14 acres for minimum size for the new service center. Once again, it's right adjacent to Northern Michigan. It does contain a gymnasium, some offices. So it is a, it's a good location, you know, proximity of Northern Michigan. Next site is the Armory Field. This is 12 acres. It's completely flat, open area, north of the center of the city. So there are some positives there. Looks like it's easy to construct a building on. Utilities are available, and it is on the fiber loop. Last one here, North Ballfields. Those are in Prescott Isle, about 14 acres. Again, it's entirely flat, open, north of the center of the city. The surrounding area is residential. Utilities are available. It's on the fiber loop. I can see each of these sites does have its own challenges. So if you go back to maybe the criteria that we listed, you might, you know, take another look at that criteria and how it would play in the decision-making on some of these sites. The last one here, call it the Wright Street property adjacent to NMU Service Center. This one's definitely very interesting. Currently, it's adjacent to Northern Michigan's service building. There is a van, not used, U.S. Forest service building there. There's 12, there's 12 acres on this location. And one thing, it has a good potential to making sort of a NMU city service center campus. And it is flat, surrounded for industrial use. So a service center would probably fit in here pretty good, based on zoning. We can be very creative as we, if we choose a site to make it fit in the surrounding area with, you know, through good engineering decisions. We have had some initial preliminary discussions with Northern Michigan. They're definitely excited about the possibility of working together. We would need part of their parking lot there, and maybe that's something we could work with, with acquiring the Armory Building. So it's sort of like a monopoly game that we could, you know, again, work with Northern. And again, the potential working together with Northern on some, on services into the future would be very positive. Combined salt, stand, services, and, you know, it just, it just seems like it would be a good partnership, not only economically, but for quality of service. But those are our, our sites. We are encouraging some questions or some commissioners' input. Once again, if recommendation at this time, you know, we would like to move forward, you know, based on commissioner comments.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Mr. Vida, do you have any follow-up comments?
Not in particular, sir. What we're hoping to do is use this as an opportunity to get a sense of the commission in terms of your view of this final set of five sites before we bring a recommendation back, hopefully sometime in the early part of February. If you believe we haven't looked at all options, or if there are things that you're looking to have clarified, or considerations that you would like to make sure that either were included in the initial analysis, or that you'd like us to go back and make sure are included in the analysis, tonight was the night we were hoping to collect up as much of your thoughts and views as possible, so we can make an informed recommendation.
Okay, thank you. To remind everybody, this is a work session. We can't have a motion, but as the manager described it, it's a time for expressing our thoughts and asking questions. Anyone have any thoughts or questions?
I just have a question.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Have to raise your hand and be recognized. Yes. Well, we got to do that. Otherwise, it gets chaotic. Mr. Baldini?
Informational. What is cold storage? I mean, on the first page, we have salt storage, snow storage, material storage, but cold storage?
I'll try to answer a few of those for you. The Public Works Building that's listed on there, that is the main building consisting of the service center that you can see from the road. The second area, the equipment laydown, that is just an open gravelled area where there's things that aren't really hurt by being out in the environment that are stored. The third area, material storage, those would be materials such as your sand pile, your gravel pile, mulch, maybe materials you've taken into the field as a temporary laydown until you can dispose of them elsewhere. Cold storage is the large building in the far northwest corner of the property, if you've looked at it from the aerial. And basically, it's just material that should be stored inside, but isn't really sensitive to temperature conditions that vary throughout the year. It's about 15,000 square feet, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood. Salt storage, that's the salt barn where we store all our salt. We store a little bit of warm material in the lean-to that's next to that, consisting of like coal patch, some sand, some gravel, in case you need to make an emergency repair during the wintertime. And then the snow storage, as you notice, we do a lot of snow removal, the banks and removal of the downtown area and that. So we've got a couple of locations around town where we haul it to. This was one of those such locations, and that consumed about four acres of the site that we had for that.
Thank you. Yes, continue.
Just a follow-up. The current salt, excuse me, is all the salt the city's of Marquette, or do we already share some of that with other?
The salt barn is a shared facility. Technically, it's with the state of Michigan, but it's the county that we're sharing it with, as they are contracted to do the state maintenance in this area.
But the city, this, the university doesn't?
University is not. That's correct.
Any other, Commissioner Connolly?
I have a question about looking at costs and partnerships. I'm going to guess that if the sites that are on the north side of the city, the Armory, the Armory are the old soccer fields where the tennis courts are, and the NMU Service Center would make it more likely to partner with NMU, or there'd be more participation. Is that a good assumption?
Yeah, that's a good assumption.
Are there any partnerships that we would curtail because we went to the north side? Like with the county, which takes care of U.S. 4128, be less likely to participate in this if we move north?
I would, I would say that would be a possibility. Also, we may want to look at a different location, you know, for a salt storage. So there is possibility that we could find, like Scott said, maybe three acres of a different area located near the McLovin, or, you know, close proximity to the state.
Okay. And in terms, as you look at these different sites, we saw some of the advantages and disadvantages, and some of the characteristics of each one. As you look at it, and I know you haven't gotten any cost estimate, but with your, in your staff's engineering background, kind of look at it and ballpark, is there one that you think is going to be cheaper to build on, more, makes more economic sense?
I think for planning, for value, I think the Wright Street one would probably be the best fit for what we're trying to achieve, long-term, short-term, and long-term. I like the idea of having a campus-type facility. And again, as we get into the design engineering, a lot of factors will be taken into effect to improve efficiencies, you know, the size of the facility. So those, those decisions will be forthcoming and taken into consideration.
So have other entities, I mean, we share salt with the county right now. Northern is looking at this as a partnership. Have there, we talked about schools, and I don't know who else, has anyone else shown an interest in coming on board?
Yeah, the schools, we had some discussions. Again, they have some funding, or they have a bond for not really facility-type constructions. The county, again, they're always open, you know, if we, you know, if we can create a opportunity for them, it's very important to continue on to discussions, and we will continue to do that.
But they're not, they haven't really stepped in and said, oh, boy, let's do this?
No, Northern Michigan has really stepped up to the plate and really excited.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campana?
I think you just answered the last question about, you know, what's Northern's, how are they leaning towards this project? And you say they're favorable. Mr. Thoms?
We're, yeah, you know, we, we--
Excuse me. Could you come up to the microphone?
My name is Jim Thoms, and I work at Facilities at Northern. And we've met with the city manager, we've met with Kurt, and we've met with Scott on a couple of occasions. And I think there are some possibilities here, as Kurt has mentioned, to kind of co-locate facilities that could benefit both entities. And I think we are interested in talking more with the city. There's a lot of logistics that have to be worked out, of course. But I think we're talking, we're interested in talking and working with the guys, see if we can make this happen.
Yes, go ahead.
An easy question. If you were to pick the North Ballfields, would you relocate those Ballfields?
That wasn't my question.
That's not yours?
Well, I guess if you go back to the criteria, certain challenges, that definitely would be a challenge. I think you would have to really take a long-term look at regional, you know, working together. Again, some of the criteria, too, that, you know, it is residential right along there with the housing. We would, even though Ballfields are maybe used four months out of the year, you would be taking away a recreational opportunity. We would have to then look for alternative location to provide that. So it would definitely need a lot further work and--
Commissioner Frazier, you had your hand up?
If you're looking at behind the NMU Service Center, would you possibly enter through their service center, or is there like access of Wright Street or Big Bay Highway, or you're just still kind of looking at that, or?
Yep. At this time, we've asked our design-build teams for the RFP, we gave them really a fictitious site. Definitely, we would look at through, we will, looking at the traffic patterns, we will be looking at a separate entrance, 550, the traffic patterns. A lot could be done during the design of a service center, so one-way, larger vehicles might be, you know, exit Sugarloaf. So there, definitely, that would be looked at very closely.
Have you looked into it at all, like, I guess, you know, you have to see what your design build, but like access for delivery vehicles and stuff like that, like the best access for them as far as, you know, obviously, the Ballfields would be easy for them to get to, but would you have to create like a separate road possibly to connect to the area behind the service center, maybe, or something, or?
Yeah, I think as we get into design and work with the traffic, you know, do a quick traffic study. Scott, we don't have much deliveries, do we, or?
Fair amount.
Fair amount. But yeah, there would be a few deliveries there, and it might be easier to come off Sugarloaf through Northern's back property.
Yeah, the only thing I was thinking was, for once, let's say, with the site is up and ready to go, is, you know, delivery for all the construction vehicles and stuff like that, too, you know, the best traffic flow for them. Obviously, with the city truck route, you know, would you have to make any special permits or anything? Obviously, trucks already go around the road anyways, so it'd be a good location, but, you know, there's something to think about, that's all.
Yeah, that's true.
Anything else? Commissioner Cambenzi?
Well, I guess I, first of all, I guess with this, as a commissioner, I am surprised there aren't any financial numbers with any of this. When we go to make a decision, I think that is part of what this commission is charged with. In mentioning the logistics, in terms of working together, I think there's a lot to that. One question I have, with the hospital going from a $230 million hospital down to about $170 million investment, seeing that our Public Works Building only takes up seven acres, everything else would be to the west of that, have there been any discussions with DLP to see exactly what their preliminary drawings look like, or how much land they need, if they even need as much as they thought originally? In other words, could the service center stay where it is, and could we still get a hospital next to that?
We have seen a preliminary drawing of the hospital. The main focus of the hospital campus is exactly where the service center is. We have, you know, again, part of the purchase agreement and the conditions is for them to have that, the whole site there, the whole parcel, which does include the service center.
Okay, you just said a purchase agreement. I haven't seen a purchase agreement, but is, I guess that's what you're, you're saying, is that there's no negotiating that part, or?
Well, we, I believe memorandum understanding, you know, this, the Duke Life Point purchase, including the current service, service center.
Okay. Is it, you know, and this has been my hang-up all along, is that, you know, the memorandum of understanding to me, and I'm not really talking at you, I'm talking out loud here, is that it's a starting point for the city and DLP. Now, when we applied for the Brownfield, they had several changes in that agreement. And I guess there are changes that I would say that the city could actually go to them and say, well, we'd like a few changes, too, or we'd like to open the discussion up more, so that this isn't such a risk for the taxpayers. And I guess, without me seeing what their preliminary design is, how big their building is, we're sitting here, ready to make decisions to move everything around for the taxpayers. And I'm concerned that we're not exploring every option out there in terms of what they actually need, or is it what they want? So I guess I'm going to come at this and say, have we asked the hard questions? Have we gone to them? Has administration gone to them? Are the numbers in place to say this, this is the best option in two weeks? Whatever we choose from here is going to be the best option. So I guess I'd like to say to my fellow commissioners, I would like those answers. I might be the lone person coming at it this way, but I feel like there are a lot of people out there that it doesn't matter if it's Brownfield money. They view that as their state taxes. They view that as their taxes, and they view it as us giving up a building that's 20 years old, that at the time was planned out to be a long-term public building. And so my challenge, whether staff takes it up or not, is to go back to Duke Life Point and say, do you really need this extra seven acres where our building is, or can you make do with the land that's leased to that? Because that's going to save us a whole lot of headaches and a whole lot of money. In the last financial statement I saw, and I don't know if staff can speak to this, but somehow, there's about $50 million in everything that's configured, that, one, we turned it into a tip agreement when we didn't have the major financial agreement in there. Two, I want to make sure, before even choosing a site, who's paying for what. And I haven't seen that yet, and I know that's not your problem presenting this to us, but I'm going to be honest with my commissioners, that I think we really better have our ducks in a row before we try and shove this through in two weeks. Because I think there's a lot of people out there, yes, they can see the benefits of moving the hospital to where it is. There's still a lot of unanswered questions, and I want to make sure that all those other possibilities are exhausted before we just jump on board. So I guess if you could take my comment back, as of, do they really need the seven acres that the current facility sits on? That would be my main question for you when choosing this, this site. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a couple of comments, some questions. If I could ask Scott to come up to-- If I could ask Scott to come up to, I think it's more fair to ask you this question. The title of my question would be the need for indoor storage. If you, I've been kind of driving around looking just where trucks are stored and the Blondo trucks or now the Hunt trucks are all stored outside. And another major trucking company here, Oberstar, and they're stored all outside. And they're private businesses and they have large fleets and yet we have large fleets and we store ours inside. Could you justify for us why the Public Works fleets need to be stored inside?
Well, as far as the large equipment goes, as you're climbing up into a lot of that equipment, a lot of that was done for safety reasons, you'll typically find that, a lot of the larger equipment where you're climbing up into it is stored inside. As far as, you know, the longevity of a lot of that equipment, I think you can show that you're gonna get more longevity out of storing equipment inside. When you're looking at the larger equipment as opposed to over-the-road trucking, you have to look a lot at the hydraulics. A lot of that larger equipment is hydraulic equipment. Hydraulics don't really like cold weather so much. It has been done, but I can tell you from the previous operation when they did store a lot of that stuff outside, you did have more accident injuries from people climbing into the machines that were iced over. You did have a lot more time spent simply getting your equipment running and getting to a warm enough state that you could operate that equipment. I don't know if that's in-depth enough or if that's-
Okay, well, thank you. I think that in following Commissioner Campana's question, I think we need to deal with that as a reason for doing this inside versus commercial who don't. And thank you for that. Okay, I have some other questions, not of you though.
Not from you, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Kurt, all these sites you gave, all but one have residential adjacent neighbors and the one is on Wright Street that does not. Even the field, the Arm, the Northern's field across the street from the Armory, that doesn't look like it has residential, but my memory remembers a lot of residents in that neighborhood behind the medical center had, it was a big brouhaha because, you know, some tennis players would say nasty words if they'd miss a ball or something and people would complain about that. And that's kind of minor compared to beep, 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 you know, at three in the morning. So, I think the nearness of residential is a real negative for a lot of these properties. And this one, and I'm gonna hopefully set the stage here, I personally, in listening to your presentation, think that the one at Wright Street is the best because it isn't near residential areas. It is an opportunity for perhaps Northern to get rid of a parking lot across the street in which we're very concerned because there's a whole, a plethora of trucks going down Wright Street. Someday, we've already had two accidents on 550, but that's another just dangerous area to have a student get run over from walking across the street, whether it be a truck or a car. But there's lots of traffic there and I think that's a win for Northern. I think if we could, so I'm very much in favor of looking at that site for planning. I, obviously, it has a lot of moving parts, Northern, the Armory and the city. So, even in spite of that, I think that's a pretty reasonable one unless everybody enjoys sitting here damaging people's neighborhoods, which is exactly what we'll do. And I don't want to go through that for the hundredth time. So, I think that's, that's my opinion, that it is the most reasonable choice to plan, okay? My next question is maybe not appropriate, and if it's not appropriate, please say you can't say. Do you, can you, can you divulge the four design firms that are you're considering or is that private? I also have not seen the actual plans for the hospital. All I've seen is, as all our commissioners have seen, it looks like a Christmas tree cookie cutter they have, that they just, you know, mark it on a piece of paper and one time I'll see it this way and the next time it'll be that way and the next time it'll be this way. I'm not sure they have definitively decided exactly where it's gonna be. Am I correct in that? I mean, because every time I look at it, they've moved the cookie cutter. And, you know, they were gonna build two office buildings and now they're gonna build one office building. So, what's up with that?
They're, they're in the process of trying to submit their certificate of need and it's our understanding that when they do that, they have to provide the state medical board with the actual mock-up design of what they're looking for. So, there's an initial build and then they're looking at doing two medical office buildings. So, how much of that rolls out, what the timing for that might be and the specific placement of it, they haven't revealed fully to us yet. Every one of the things they've revealed to us shows that the main building is going to be overlapping all or in part of the service center footprint.
Okay. Again, in follow-up, all of this is still, is there a purchase agreement now or is that being developed?
That's actually what we're in the process of negotiating right now. We'd originally been expecting to get a draft from DLP late last year. It came in about two weeks ago and it's in the process of review.
Okay. So, all of this is fluid, flowing, it's nothing's written in stone, basically?
No, absolutely not. And in fact, part of, part of the things that you'll see coming before the commission, in addition to a selection of a design build firm, a recommendation for where to locate the service center is, we've been invited, Ms. Sherry Davy from the Brownfield authorities in the back of the room, to participate with them during the next Michigan Strategic Fund Board meeting where we go in and actually seek the final approval for the Act 381 plan. We also are expecting that at some point, hopefully very near to that date, we'll be bringing a purchase agreement before the city with all of the final terms and conditions on selling the property and starting off all of our side of the, of the responsibility for implementing the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Just a, are you ready? Okay, what are the four firms?
Okay, first one is Big D Construction and Mead &amp; Hunt.
We can't hear you.
Big D Construction and Mead &amp; Hunt.
Okay.
Got it? There's Myron Construction, they partnered with Byavski Architects and AECom. Gunlock Champion is with FTC and H, which is Fisher, Fishbeck, Thompson Car and Huber. And then they partner with GEI also. And the last one is Wyland Davco and Hobson Black and they're partnering with North Country for civil.
North Country what?
North Country Engineering for their civil.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I've spoken my piece in terms of hearing what you, what your choices are, that's what I think is the best. Anybody want to voice an opinion? Commissioner Reynolds?
One question first, Kurt, and then the rest are comments not directed towards you necessarily. In the Wright Street property adjacent to NMU, is the 12.6 acres, is that what we own and then the possible is the extra?
The 12.6 would include Northern's parking lot.
Okay, Northern's portion, okay. And this isn't addressed toward you, but I agree with Commissioner Campana. As I went through this and as this sits on my desk today, I don't think it's, I have enough information, money, downtime, best location. I do personally sound, this sounds great and this sounds like the best location, it'd be wonderful to work with Northern, we're not dealing with residential problems, but I'd be really uncomfortable to sign a purchase agreement if this isn't in solid and set in stone and without looking at designs from, or the design you put forth to us from one of those firm combinations, so. But that being said, this sounds like the best option for us, but I, I don't know if I would sign on for it without having a little bit more information, so.
Okay, I don't, is it fair to say we're not asking anybody to sign off on anything right now?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, it's just your opinion of these, you know, which is the best and then start working on some. Any other opinions? Commissioner Connolly?
This is, I went to the public, the town hall meeting a couple of weeks ago and was really impressed at coming up with that joint effort with Northern on the Wright Street property. It's where we used to have a service center or very well near it too. It's a lot, it answers a lot of questions and concerns. It also is probably the most, well, I can't say I'm not an engineer, but it, if it allows us to share costs, it will likely be the most cost-effective. I would favor putting more time and effort in developing that idea, that would be my preference. I also, my comments about the memorandum of understanding, we have a deal with the hospital to vacate the entire property and I take that deal seriously. I also don't want to cram them on the east side of that property and then at a later time when they need to expand, and hopefully they'll be so successful that they need to, to then have to move the service center and do it in a hurry or to curtail their growth. I think we have a good thing here with a medical center that will truly be a regional center and will continue to keep healthcare dollars in the Upper Peninsula. And I don't want a municipal service center being an issue in stunting that growth. It's good for all of us.
Thank you. The city manager had his hand up first and then Commissioner Campana, yes? Would you wish to speak? Commissioner Campana?
If I was to pick a site, I would like the site off of Wright Street, right next to the NMU facility. If I was to build, if I was to build there, I'd like it because, you know, there are no neighbors there and has easy access and there is a problem, let's forget that. The other question I have is if you don't, if we don't move the municipal service center now, it stays there, and then you gotta move it in the future as Commissioner Connolly just mentioned, do you even have Brownfield money to do that? Or do you lose that access to Brownfield money? So, now, at this point, we have Brownfield funding to move it. Is that a question I can ask of Sherry?
Sure. Sherry, would you come forward?
That's the answer that we are looking for when we go to MEDC, the Michigan Strategic Fund, next in February, last weekend. And that's what it's all about, is if we, that is in place to help move this center because the hospital isn't going to come here unless they can be there, so, yeah. Does that answer your question?
Well, if, say, say, say we said keep the service center where it is and build the hospital right next to it, and then we find out that the hospital wants to expand and they say we need, now we really gotta take that property. So, now we gotta knock down the service center and let's build it somewhere else. Can you get Brownfield money at that time?
I wouldn't think you could. Basically, we could do things if they were adjacent to, if, you know, you're gonna move the municipal center next door or something. But I think to access this original Brownfield plan, you have to be, you know, in that proximity and adjacent to.
Okay.
So, you know, there's not saying that, depending where you're going to put it, you might be looking at another Brownfield plan, but as you know, it has to have some other specifications, it has to be designated such, so, you know, it would be kind of questionable, I think.
It's a little cloudy there.
Yes, it does, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioners wishing to speak? Well, Mr. Manager, do you have an idea of what the view of the commission is, the commissioners are? I mean, rather, we don't have a unified view, but-
I believe we do, sir, thank you. And like I said, there are a number of subsequent steps we need to take. We'll be, we'll be supporting all of the financial sides with purchase agreements, Brownfield plans, all of those kind of things, to make it absolutely clear what this is going to cost and what it will all entail. We have a number of different recommendations still coming forward on the service center relocation as we've discussed here this evening. And we thank you for helping us make those better informed as we bring each one of those documents forward for approval.
Okay, thank you. Well, seeing no other questions or willingness to comment, I'll adjourn the meeting. We'll start again at seven o'clock.